The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Vice President Combe.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Varmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrick. President Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Varmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Boyd. We have eleven present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A quorum being present, we will be led in opening prayer or reflection by Seven, Executive Director of Excelsis Inc.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Good morning, everyone. I'm privileged to address this morning our reflection today. My heart is full of hope. As what we witness here, you represent, would translate actually the beauty and the richness of what we are as a St. Louis, as a city, and also the diversity that we represent here. The reflection of this morning, I have the honor to share with you. It was from the book of Jeremiah, chapter twenty-nine, verse seven, that reads, "Pursue the well-being of the city I have deported you to. Pray for the Lord on its behalf, for when it thrives, also you will thrive." I would like to first acknowledge all the incredible work each of you has accomplished in your various wards. However, we are encouraged, as humans, as a society, this morning, to challenge our complacency by actively seeking for new ways to better, new ways and better solution for our city. We ought to ask ourselves, how can we effectively tackle issues like gun violence, road safety, mental health, and homelessness, which I'm strongly and extremely passionate about? I believe if these issues, gun violence, mental health, road safety, and homelessness are well addressed, this will drive the economy of this city and also uplift and enhance the quality of life. As this morning, we've heard that, you know, someone has been shot and, you know, deceased this morning, and we had some on-house individuals involved in this situation. That's just to tell us how important this, this issue is for us as a society to really come together and work for this, to address this issue. The good news is, you are not alone. You have several organizations in the community working, well immersed in the community, working to help you to, to support the work you guys are doing already. Several organizations in the community, like in Excelsis, which I'm affiliated with, actively involve in providing essential services to on-house individuals, families, and veterans. In line with the call to action that the book of Jeremiah, chapter twenty-nine, verse seven, is giving us this morning, in Excelsis, I started, I launched a mobile shower program last week to serve our on- individual as a navigate through homelessness. Honorable body, allow me to extend my gratitude to extend to each of you for your attention, and I would like to end with a poem written by Reverend Jack Amick. He serves in Switzerland with the, with the migrant in Switzerland, and which mirrors somehow the, the daily struggle of an on-house person, but through the lens of a migrant, and it's called "The Migrant Messiah." "I am wondering, wanderer, who will not rest until rest is, rest in God? I am a prophetic passerby, the homeless whisperer, whose words hit you like a brick of wisdom after. You step out of spitting distance. I am a vagrant volunteer, serving for a time, then slipping away, nameless but not forgotten. I am a refugee, on the run, fleeing violence and hate, forever looking over my shoulder in fears, and forever looking forward in hope. I am every maid, and farm worker, and day laborer. You never took time to welcome, pay well, or even learn my name. I am the dancing, creating spirit of love. Notice me, welcome me, and you will see in a new way, I am your migrant Messiah, or I am your migrant, or I am your homeless Messiah." Thank you.
Announcements of any special order of the day, we will dispense with the regular order of business to take up special order of the day. Alderwoman, or Aldermen from the fourteenth, please approach the dais with your honored guests.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Looking good on you up here, by the way. Madam Clerk, could you read Resolution Number Thirty?
Resolution Number Thirty, Recognizing Those Who Are Impacted By Strokes And Those Who Take Care Of Those Who Have Had A Stroke, Whereas Stroke Is A Leading Cause Of Long-Term Disability And The Fifth Leading Cause Of Death In The United States, Affecting People Of All Ages, Genders, And Ethnicities. And whereas, according to the American Heart Association, someone in the United States has a stroke every forty seconds, and every four minutes, someone dies from a stroke. And whereas, the city of St. Louis recognizes the importance of raising awareness about stroke prevention, risk factors, and warning signs, and promoting access to high-quality stroke care. And whereas, during Stroke Awareness Month in May, the city of St. Louis joins with healthcare providers, community organizations, and individuals in the effort to reduce the incidence and impact of stroke. And whereas, the city of St. Louis encourages all residents to learn about stroke prevention and to take steps to reduce their risk of stroke, such as maintaining a healthy lifestyle, managing chronic conditions, and seeking medical attention promptly from any signs or symptoms of stroke. And whereas, the city of St. Nys is the critical role of healthcare providers in providing timely and effective stroke care, including emergency response, diagnosis, treatment, and rehabilitation. And whereas, the city of St. Louis supports ongoing efforts to improve stroke care, including research, education, and community outreach. And whereas, the city of St. Louis honors those who have been affected by stroke, including survivors, caregivers, and families, and expresses solidarity with them in the ongoing fight against stroke. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize all those who are impacted with strokes and those who take care of those who have been impacted with a stroke. Be further direct, the clerk of this board of aldermen, to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings, and to prepare a commemorative copy of this resolution to the end, that it may be presented to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this third day of May, twenty twenty-four, by the honorable Rasheen Aldrick, Alderman of the Fourteenth Ward. Co-sponsors: the Honorable Megan Green, President, Board of Aldermen; the Honorable Anne Schweitzer, Alderman of First Ward; the Honorable Shane Cone, Alderman of the Third Ward; Alderman Bretton Orion, Alderman of the Fourth Ward; the Honorable Joseph Varmer, Alderman of the Fifth Ward; the Honorable Daniela Velazquez, Alderman of the Sixth Ward; the Honorable Elisa Sanier, Alderwomen of the Seventh Ward; the Honorable Kara Spencer, Alderwoman of the Eighth Ward; the Honorable Michael Browning, Alderman of the Ninth Ward; the Honorable Shamim Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman of the Tenth Ward; the Honorable Laura Keys, Alderwoman of the Eleventh Ward; the Honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderwoman of the Twelfth Ward; the Honorable Pamela Boyd, Alderwoman of the Thirteenth Ward, adopted this third day of May, twenty twenty-four, as attested by Terry Kennedy, the Clerk Board of Aldermen, and Megan Green, President, Board of the Alder.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and members of the committee. This is a resolution we did do last week, but I want to allow a special friend who's doing great work in this space to also be able to speak. Last week, I shared several facts about strokes, and during this past week, actually, one staff member here at the Board of Aldermen came in my office, and she shared a story about when she had a stroke and how she caught it early. And I just want to continue to echo to as many people that's watching or people in our community. If you feel like something is a little off, or if you feel like something is not right, please get checked out early. The earlier, the better, when it comes to strokes, as I've shared with this body, and you guys have embraced me so much that I greatly appreciate. And earlier this year, like I say, I've, I lost my mom due to stroke, and it took her about four to five days to actually figure out that she had a stroke before she actually went to the hospital. And unfortunately, it was kind of too far out that did more damage to a part of her brain that eventually did damage to the whole brain, which eventually later made her brain dead. So the earlier that people can catch these health concerns is much better, and not to wait at the very last minute. And I just want to thank the Board of Aldermen, and the Alderwoman from the Seventh Ward, and all my colleagues who are making this resolution last week. It really meant the world to me, as y'all know, kind of my personal story behind it. And now I want to allow my special guest to come up and speak more, a little bit about stroke.
Good morning to the Board, to the members of the city of St. Louis Board of Aldermen. Give a special recognition to Alderman, Alderman Rusty Aldridge, and, and the entire board for not only sponsoring this bill but doing so unanimously. I'm here today to emphasize the importance of observing Stroke Awareness Month and to highlight the need to educate our community about the signs and symptoms of stroke. Stroke is a leading cause of death and disability in the United States, and unfortunately, there are significant racial disparities in stroke incidence and mortality rates. According to the American Heart Association, African-Americans have a higher risk of stroke than any other racial, ethnic group in the United States. In addition to that, every forty seconds, someone in the United States experiences a stroke. For African-Americans, they're disproportionately impacted, but they also are more likely to have stroke at a younger age and to experience more severe strokes. In Missouri, stroke is the third leading cause of death. According to the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, African-Americans have a higher rate of stroke hospitalization and mortality than any other racial or, or ethnic group in the state. In fact, African-Americans in Missouri are twice as likely to die from stroke as whites. These disparities are concerning and highlight the need for targeted education and outreach efforts to ensure that all members of our community are aware of the signs and symptoms of stroke and have access to timely and appropriate medical care. By working together, we can make a difference in reducing these disparities and improving the health outcomes of all members of our community. I urge you to support local and national efforts to raise awareness about stroke and its impact on our community, with a particular focus on addressing the racial, racial disparities that exist in stroke incidence and mortality rates. Again, thank you all for your time today, and thank you for supporting this very critical resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Echols, and thank you, Alderman Aldridge. Onto introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the Eighth, you're recognized. Or, I'm sorry, Alderwoman, Alder Lady from the Tenth.
I was gonna wait. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Members of the board, I would like to have, in honor of National Provider Appreciation Day, also known as Childcare Provider Day, all of the teachers, childcare providers, early childhood education professionals, not just here in the city of St. Louis, but in our region, in our country, in our world. If you've never experienced the blessing of having good childcare or lived through the nightmare of having bad childcare, then you might not know the value of it. But there is absolutely, absolutely value in good quality early childhood education, childcare. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to all of the teachers. Again, this was National Teacher Appreciation Week culminating today in National Provider Week, and thank you for your service. Please don't get weary, weary in your well-doing. We need you.
Alderwoman from the Eleventh.
I'm sorry, did you save me?
I did.
Thank you. Good, good morning, members of the board, and Vice Chair Shane. Okay, so as, as you all may or may not know, May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. The color for mental health awareness is green, so I was really happy to, to see a little green other than my shirt here in the room this morning. And I'd like to remind people that if you have family, friends, coworkers, anyone who may be struggling with mental health issues, there is help. Provident, NAMI, Veterans Administration, help for PTSD, Salvation Army Behavioral Health Services, SLU Healthcare and Mental Health Services, Hope Center for VA Women, BUT ONE, ULLC, and United Way. If you should need their assistance, please dial two-one-one. Yesterday, at O'Fallon Park, James Clark and the Urban League, and I believe the Office of Violence Prevention, did a very, very great program at O'Fallon Park, encouraging everyone to please slow down. We are paying a very high premium, not only in insurance, but we're paying it in the cost of lives, we're paying it in the cost of injury, we're, we're paying in the areas of property damage. Please, please, slow down, and thank the Urban League for all of their hard work. On Sunday, Heritage House, or Ms. Olly Stewart of Southside Wellness, held a day in honor of the residents of Heritage House. And so my honored guests today, in addition to all of those agencies that I mentioned, with Mental Health Services and the Urban League, or all of the residents of Heritage House who went through that terrible time on January fifteenth where the pipes burst, and they were temporarily displaced. I'd like to thank Alderwoman, or former Alderwoman Marlene Davis, who is the best assistant here at the Board of Aldermen, Ms. Olly Stewart for all of her work in advocating for our seniors, the Downtown Hilton Airport, Hilton, Ungod, Element, Cheshire Inn, and Weston, their staffs treated the residents of Heritage House like any other guest, and they were given excellent, excellent treatment there. Gentry's Landing, Lookaway Heights, McCormick Baron worked side by side with the Hope Agency to make sure that our seniors had everything that they needed. A couple stations' lofts were also instrumental in assisting. Additionally, none of this really could have happened if it were not for Michael McMillan of the Urban League, James Clark, Faircon Shagog, Robert Cotton, and Monica Patton, and their extended staff, who moved residents in and out of various hotels as negotiations went on to make sure that they were temporarily placed until they could find permanent placement. I want to thank and acknowledge Andrea Jackson Jennings of STL Gives, Alana Smith of STL Gives, Canard Williams, Action St. Louis, and their whole team came out to assist. Jamie Oplsel of Jamie Oplsel of St. Louis Senior Fund, Stephanie Herbert's of St. Louis Senior Fund, and Tracy Fantini Spies of Hope for Senior St. Louis. I want to thank Send Reliefs, Tracy with an I, a bird with a Y, who was wonderful about helping our seniors to meet all of their needs in terms of food while they were there. She brought in Chef T, who is also my special guest this morning. The Hope Organization, Old Henry and Deer Valley came in to provide services. I want to thank Danielle Spradley with Cory Bush's office, who helped to shepherd us through this. I want to thank Wesley Beal. We almost thought he was going to be a resident. He was there so much. And so Katz Hannah with Umsel, Paul Sorensen with Umsel, and the whole area agency, the area agency on aging, Annalee Stover, Grace Young, Adam Pearson, Dylan Holloman, and Adam, who is the direct, Adam Person, who is the Director of Human Services here in the city of St. Louis. My list is a little long, but I'm almost getting there. I'm almost done. So the Southern Baptist Traveling Missionaries, these folks could cook. They came out several times and brought a catered meal in for those seniors. But especially, let me, let me tell you this. Now, this is what was really great. The Assistant to the Mayor, Jared Boyd, who was instrumental in negotiating all of these hotels for these seniors to stay in. He and Kevin Bailey were with us every step of the way. But the coup de grace was when our mayor came to the Airport Hilton and visited with our seniors. They were starstruck, they were amazed, and it was so wonderful to see that interaction and to see that leadership to come and see about the people. So I just want to thank scores of individual, people from all walks of life who came. They brought food, they brought toiletries, clothing, and so many other things that were needed for that situation. But last and not least, I want to thank Mr. James Keys, who every day walked me to the door, assisted me with loading things in my car. And every night when I returned from seeing about our residents, he would meet me once again at that door to receive me home. And I am grateful to be loved like that. So the very last thing I'm gonna say is this. So every woman here has a Mother's Day card on her desk or will receive one. I see a few people I didn't catch. But I want to say something about that. You know, some people say, well, I'm not a mother. And one thing that I learned a long time ago when I was struggling with infertility and endometriosis, a wise woman said to me, every tree is not meant to bear fruit. Some trees are made to give shade and comfort. And so I say that to say that every woman that I know at some point in her life has nurtured a child, has loved on a child, has given advice to a child, has even sheltered a child. And so for that reason, put your crown on. You are a mother too. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Coon and members of the Board. First of all, I want to give a shout out to the Vice President for looking real good up there. Second of all, I wanted to have as my honored guest, yesterday at the Luminary on Cherokee Street, we had a show that featured art pieces from folks who were asylum seekers. I went knowing that I would have a good time and learn a lot of information. And the things that I learned that's still sitting with me is that only 11% of asylum seekers are approved. And that's the federal number. And so I want to have all the folks who are here in our country for various reasons, whether that is to study, whether that is to get a job, who are seeking refuge and are seeking safe places to go and all of the complicated bureaucratic processes that often ignore their humanity. I want to have those folks who are here as my guest and make sure I give a special shout out to the Michael Project, to the International Institute, to the Luminary. There are so many community partners who are working to do the work in the city and specifically in the Seventh Ward, where we do have a large population that is international and immigrant. And so I just wanted to bring some of those facts to light and have those folks as my guest. And some of those folks are up for reevaluation. And we know that 89% of them will likely be deported and sent back where they came from after being here for five to seven years. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the First.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the Board. Today, I would like to have as my honored guest the son of my wonderful Executive Secretary Janice Saladin. Is an incredible student graduating from high school. And he told me this morning that he wants to be an astrophysicist. So I can barely say that word, but I appreciate the chair of the city. Thank you.
Alderman from the Fourteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and members of the Board. As my guest, I have a couple guests. I'll keep it quick because we already in the 30-minute hour and we haven't done business yet. But I want to thank the city of St. Louis water workers or water, the people that work for the Water Division. We had a major water main break this past Friday at Penrose and Blair. That water main break had went for about three days, where it was just water gushing out of the streets for several days. The water even entered one resident's home. As we know, our infrastructure is something that we are working on as a committee of the whole. Our infrastructure is old. But I do want to thank the city workers who worked very hard to try to get the water main break fixed. The pipe didn't just bust, but also the valve had ended up busting. It was a 1894, 95 infrastructure that had been in the ground for a very long time. Also do want to give a shout out to Kevin Bailey from the mayor's office, as well as Director of Operation Nancy Cross, who kept me in tune of what was going on, so that I was able to keep the residents updated. I want to give a shout out also, I'm assuming Alderwoman Keys would do the same now that she's back up, to all the young men and women that was here this past week at the Board of Aldermen in City Hall, the seventh graders from Afton Middle School. Hold on, hold on, this is my floor, not your floor. This is on me, but seventh grade, seventh graders from the Afton Middle School. And I'm gonna let Alderwoman Keys elaborate on that. But I also want to give a huge shout out to, she is not my Executive Secretary, but we have so many amazing Executatives around here that are here. To Janice Mohammed, her son is here, Saladin Mohammed. I made sure I got it right. He's a young, fabulous, young man who will be graduating. He is going to the University of Tacoma, Washington, at SEIU, Southern Illinois University. I mean, he has so many accolades. So I'm just gonna take the time to just call out a few of them. He's not just the son of the amazing Janice Mohammed, who is here today. He is also the son of his amazing father, Mr. Edwin Mohammed. Mr. Saladin Mohammed is also a member of the Mohammed Mosque, Number 28, at the Life Center International Church of God and Christ. He is also a graduating from Ridner High School, where he is the captain of the varsity soccer team and played on the volleyball team and a member of the track and field. His accolades go long. He's just an amazing young man to the great.
We're doing resolutions.
No, I'm just doing introduction of special guests.
Okay.
I know we had an agenda. This ain't a resolution. I just got it held up. This is my introduction of special guests. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. But as I continue on, again, he's just a young man that's doing a lot of great work. And I just give you your flowers. You have an amazing mother. This Sunday is Mother's Day coming up. Make sure you take the time to cherish her, love her, because she talks so highly about you and all your other siblings here at the Board of Aldermen. So to you, thank you for the amazing work that you're doing and accomplishment. And here at the Board of Aldermen, we wish you the best in your next chapter of life as you go on to college. Thank you.
The Alderman from the Fifth would like me to remind everyone that honored guests are in the room. But Alderwoman from the Eleventh, you're recognized.
Thank you so much. So I wanted to also have as my honored guest and acknowledge those wonderful people, amazing people, talented, artistic people who are born in the month of May. Chiefly, our great resource, I call him the Oracle, Terry Kennedy, who celebrated his birthday on the eighth. He is amazing and such a great wealth of knowledge. My colleague Daniela Velazquez is a May birthday. I am a May birthday on Monday. Didn't fall on Mother's Day this year. So just, and hopefully I didn't miss anybody else with a May birthday.
My Legislative Assistant.
John Stokes. Where is he? Is he in the room?
He took the day off.
Oh, he is today, though. Okay, it's today. So May birthdays, happy, happy birthday to you. I'm so sorry, Shanika Hayden from the President's office. Oh, Tashin, Shashin, Jushin. We gonna get it right. So again, those beautiful, beautiful, beautiful people who are born in May, we love you. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other introduction? Alderwoman Tyus, you're recognized. You're on mute, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest, a very special person who's lived in the 20th slash first, now 12th Ward. Her name is Martha Jane West. Her birthday is Mother's Day. People in my ward tend to like to live for a long time. So I'm not going to tell her age, except to say it's between 90 and 100. She's been recently ill, but it's getting better. But she's one of the greatest constituents you could ever have and a lover of our community. And I want to wish her a happy birthday and also wish that she gets well as fast as possible because she is a valued resident in the community.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other introduction of honored guests? Onto Approval of the Minutes from our previous meeting. Alderman from the Tenth, you're recognized on the Approval of the Minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, May 3rd, 2024.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the Tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the Seventh, that we approve the meeting minutes from Friday, May 3rd, 2024. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Report of City Officials.
Report of City Officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda. It has been placed in the Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for the reappointment to the Zoological Park Subdistrict Board, the reappointment of Carl Greis, and the reappointment of Cynthia Brinkley. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely, Tashara O. Jones.
Alderwoman from the Tenth, you're recognized on Mayor Jones's appointment to the Zoological Park Subdivision Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move that we approve the reappointments of Mr. Carl Greis and Ms. Cynthia Brinkley to the Zoological Park Subdivision Board.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the Tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the Seventh, that we approve Mayor Jones's appointments to the Zoological Park Subdivision Board. Is there any discussion? I see Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman from the 12th Ward, you're recognized.
Mr. Vice President, members of the Board, I'd ask for the sponsor to Cindy's this nomination to committee, the appropriate committee.
Thank you. I renew my motion to approve the reappointments of Mr. Carl Greis and Ms. Cynthia Brinkley to Zoological Park Subdivision Board.
So excuse me, she doesn't have the floor because I didn't ask for it. I'm just asking for it. And no, I do not accept that she can renew her motion in the middle of me having the floor. So what I will call for is a roll call. That's what she's going to do. And she cannot renew her motion in the middle of something. She, I could have asked for her to yield, which I did not. And she cannot, she needs to learn the rules. Thank you very much. Roll call.
Thank you. Are you complete, Alderwoman?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, there's been a call for roll call. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Odenberg. Vice Chair Coon. Vice President Coon.
Aye.
So there was an aye for Odenberg? Okay. Alderman Norian. Alderman Vommer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
No.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrick. President Green. We have 12 aye votes. We have 11 aye votes and one no vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the Tenth to approve Mayor Jones's appointments to the Zoological Park Subdivision Board.
I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for the reappointment to the Union Station Community Improvement District, the reappointment of Robert Olafland, the reappointment of Stephen Olafland, the reappointment of Norman Alfaro, the reappointment of Kathy Raftery, the reappointment of Joseph Mooney. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely, Tashara O. Jones.
Alderwoman from the Eighth. You are recognized on Mayor Jones's appointments to the Union Station Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the Board. I move that we approve the mayor's appointment to the Union Station.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the Eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the Fifth, that we approve Mayor Jones's appointments to the Union Station Community Improvement District. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Odenberg. Vice President Coon.
Aye.
Alderman Norian. Alderman Vommer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrick. President Green. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Boyd. We have 13 aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the Eighth to approve Mayor Jones's appointment to the Union Station Community Improvement. Petitions and Communications.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item eight, Board Bills for Perfection on the Informal Calendar.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item nine, Board Bills for Third Reading Informal Calendar.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 10, Resolutions on the Informal Calendar.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 11. Alderman from the Eighth, you're recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 32 for first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the Board. I move that we, for the suspension of the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Number 32, which.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the Eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the Fourteenth, that we suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill 32. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. If I may, Board Bill Number 32, which should be on everyone's desk, is a bill that would authorize an honorary street name on Liangwei. What this bill really does is really provides an opportunity for our city to recognize a rich cultural history with regards to our Asian-American community. This bill will provide an honorary street name in honor of our historic Chinatown, which existed in the city of St. Louis from 1869 until 1966. right in the heart of our downtown. The intersection of 8th Street and Walnut, and it runs north on 8th Street to the intersection of South 8th and Market. This part of our state, of our downtown area was for many, for almost, almost 100 years, our city's Chinatown. And this honorary street designation is our opportunity to recognize, to recognize that. And I'm honored here to be joined by Peter Tao and Michelle Lee, members of our community, who not only brought this issue and this aspect of our city's history to the attention of the Board of Aldermen, but really put together a wonderful preamble here that really describes this history and can educate our policymakers in our city as to the importance of this risk for our community. And while we're just introducing this here today, I'm really excited to invite all my colleagues. I'm grateful for the eight of us who have joined on as cosponsors here. But I really welcome this as not only an opportunity to provide signage, but provide a conversation about the importance of diversity in our city, the importance of recognizing the different communities that make our city what it is. And so with that, Mr. President, I ask for your favorable consideration as we suspend the rules for the purpose of introducing this board bill so we can start to move this honor along.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The motion to suspend the rules is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, will we, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Vice President Kohn.
Aye.
Alderman Norrion. Alderman Vommer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrick. President Green. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. We have 12 aye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the 8th to suspend the rules for the purposes of putting Board Bill 32 on the first reading of board bills. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 32 at the end of the first reading of board bills.
Noted.
Pardon? We're not, this was just to suspend the rules for the purposes of introduction. The board bill has now been added to the first reading calendar for introduction today. If you'd like to have your name added as a cosponsor, you can let the clerk know. And if you want to make a motion to end bank, that would be later in the process here. We're on first reading of board bills, Alderwoman.
First reading of board bills. Board Bill Number 24, introduced by Alderman Kohn, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airparts and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of the St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the Third Amendment to the airport use and lease agreement with certain airlines, which was authorized by ordinance number 70273, approved May 25th, 2016, and ordinance number 71295, approved December 11th, 2020, and ordinance number 71589, approved December 16th, 2022, containing a servability clause. Board Bill Number 25, introduced by Alderman Odenberg, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the 5800 block of Lorraine Avenue, 5300 block of Alfred Avenue, 5300 block of Gilson Avenue, 8000 block of Wanda Avenue, 4900 block of Nego Avenue, 5600 block of Holly Hills Avenue, and the 6400 block of Murdoch Avenue. Board Bill Number 26, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the 5800 block of Cates Avenue by blocking said traffic flow at the intersection of 5800 block of Cates Avenue and Hamilton Avenue. Board Bill Number 27, introduced by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Grape Avenue and Tara Lane, regulating all traffic traveling on Grape Avenue and Tara Lane at the intersection of Grape Avenue and Tara Lane. Board Bill Number 28, introduced by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, to calm the flow of traffic on the 5500 block of Era Avenue, the 1800 block of Eden Avenue, the 5600 block of Hiller Place, the 5900 block of Park Lane, and the 5000 block of Claxton Avenue. Board Bill Number 29, introduced by Alderman Odenberg, an ordinance pertaining to fingerprint-based background check requirements as a condition of employment or contract in regulating licensure as a watchman, private security officer, or courier within the city of St. Louis and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 30, sponsored by Alderman Aldrick and Alderman Norrion, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis a proposal to change Article 16, Section 3 of the Charter of the City of St. Louis to permit the Board of Aldermen to increase the amount of any item in the appropriations proposed to the city's annual budget. Ordinance except amounts fixed by statute or for the payment of principal or interest of the city's debt or for meeting any ordinance obligations and calling for an election for voting on said change in the manner of voting at the election and the publication and certification, deposit, and recording as required by Article 6, Section 33 of the Missouri Constitution and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 31, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, authorizing a 2024 St. Louis Works and the 50/50 sidewalk program, citywide providing for the construction and reconstruction of gutters, streets, driveways, spot curbs, sidewalks, alleys, traffic controls, beautification, tree planting, resurfacing, and related engineering adjustments listed hereon appropriating $5,200,000 from the Street Improvement Fund, containing sections for description of the work approval plans and specifications, work material guarantees, estimated costs from city funds, and supplemental agreements and reversion authorizations applicable, state and federal rate requirements, equal opportunity provisions, the mayor's executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and public work emergency clause. Board Bill Number 32, introduced by Alderwoman Spencer, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Kohn, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderman Norrion, and Alderwoman Velazquez. Board Bill Number 32, introduced by Alderwoman Kara Spencer, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name on Leang Way pursuant to ordinance number 68937, which shall begin at the intersection of South 8th Street and Walnut Park, I'm sorry, Walnut Street, and run north on South 8th Street to the intersection of South 8th Street and Market Street. That is the extent of the first reading of board bills.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you assign Board Bill Number 32 to the public infrastructure committee?
Noted.
Reference to committee.
Reference to committee of board bills, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill Number 24, to Public Infrastructure and Utilities, Board Bill Number 25, 26, 27, 28, 31, and 32, to Public Safety, Board Bill Number 29, to Legislation and Rules, Board Bill Number 30.
Did, did I hear 32 and public infrastructure? Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of Public Infrastructure and Utilities with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill Number 4, introduced by Alderwoman Spencer, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on various blocks in the 8th Ward. Board Bill Number 5, introduced by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, to calm the flow of traffic on the 3,600 block of Ala Boulevard, the 4,100 and 4,600 blocks of Carter Avenue, the 3,800 block of Lincoln Avenue, the 3,200, 3,300, 3,400, and 3,500 blocks of Washington Avenue, the 400 and 500 blocks of Cardinal Avenue, and the 400 and 500 blocks of North Compton Avenue. Board Bill Number 6, introduced by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop sign at the intersection of North Garrison Avenue and Locust Street, regulating all traffic traveling north and southbound on North Garrison Avenue at the intersection of North Garrison Avenue and Locust Street, and regulating all traffic traveling east and westbound on Locust Street at the intersection of Locust Street and North Garrison Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 18, introduced by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, to calm the flow of traffic on the 3,600, 3,700, 3,800, 3,900, 4,000, 4,100, 42, 4,300, 4,400, 4,500, and 4,600 blocks of Lee Avenue. Board Bill Number 19, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the 4,000 block of Concordia Avenue. Board Bill Number 22, introduced by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop sign at the intersection of Lee Avenue and Cora Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling east and westbound on Lee Avenue at the intersection of Lee Avenue, Cora Avenue, and a two-way stop sign at the intersection of Lee Avenue and Dryden Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling east and westbound on Lee Avenue at the intersection of Lee Avenue and Dryden Avenue and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number 23, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing the Department of Public Utilities to accept grant awards from the Drinking Water State Revolving Funds, administered through the Missouri Department of Natural Resources with funding from the American Rescue Plan Act and the bipartisan infrastructure law appropriation, appropriating such funds to the Department of Public Utilities and authorizing the expenditure of such funds to fulfill the obligations of said grant to the extent such funds are received and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of second reading and report of standing committees.
Report of special committees.
We have none.
Board bills for perfection consent.
Board bills for perfection and consent. Board Bill Number 9, introduced by Alderwoman, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue its leasehold revenue refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $20 million in order to refund all or a portion of its outstanding Series 2015 bonds containing servability and emergency clauses. Board Bill Number 10, introduced by Alderman Kohn, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing the directing the insurance establishment of terms in sale of airport revenue bonds not to exceed $320 million to finance the cost of the purchasing, extension, improvement, or enlargement of the airport containing servability and emergency clauses. Board Bill Number 3, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, to install speed humps on the 1,200 block of Montclair Avenue. That is the extent of board bills for perfection consent.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for perfection consent.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board bills for perfection. We have none.
Please dispense with line item 16B. Report of engrossment.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 17. Third reading and final passage of board bills consent.
We have none.
Third reading and final passage of board bills.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 18B. Report of finally passed and signed by the president.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 19. First reading of resolution and reference to committee.
Resolution Number 36, introduced by Alderman Odenberg, recognizing May 2024 as ALS Awareness Month.
Alderwoman, or Alderman from the 2nd, you're recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 36.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I request that the clerk please read Resolution 36.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 2nd, seconded by the Alder, Alderman from the 14th. Madam Clerk, oh, will you please read the resolution, Madam Clerk?
Resolution Number 36, recognizing May 2024 as ALS Awareness Month. Whereas amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, known by many as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with the muscles, slowly taking away their ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas ALS is a devastating condition that affects thousands of individuals worldwide with an estimated 5,000 new cases diagnosed in the United States each year. And whereas ALS not only impacts the individuals diagnosed with the disease, but also their families, caregivers, and communities, highlighting the importance of raising awareness and supporting research efforts. And whereas May is recognized as ALS Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to educate the public about ALS, raise funds for research and support services, and advocate for policies that improve the lives of people living, living with ALS. And whereas organizations, healthcare professionals, advocates, and individuals across the nation come together during ALS Awareness Month to promote awareness, support, and research initiatives aimed at finding a cure for ALS and improving quality of life for those affected by the disease. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize May 2024 as ALS Awareness Month and encourage all St. Louisans to participate in activities and events aimed at raising awareness about ALS, supporting people impacted by the disease and their loved ones in advancing research efforts to find effective treatments and ultimately a cure for ALS. We further direct the clerk of this Board of Aldermen to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy of this resolution to the end that it may be presented to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor introduced this 10th day of May 2024 by the Honorable Thomas Odenberg, Alderman of the 2nd Ward.
Alderman, you're recognized on the motion for unanimous consent.
Thank you. I request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objections. Alderman, you may proceed.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate that. I had a constituent reach out to me and remind me that May was ALS Awareness Month, and I'm grateful that she did. It's likely that we all have constituents that are in some way impacted by this disease. It is a terrible disease, as, as you heard the reading of the resolution, and it's yet to have a cure. So the more we can raise awareness and formally sanction in these channels the Board of Aldermen awareness of this disease, we can help the quality of life with those impacted, not only the patients and the symptoms that are treated, but also the family members that are affected by this. Additionally, raising awareness helps with research, and it also helps with data and it also helps with data so that we can not only, again, help with the symptoms that impact this disease, help with ultimately, hopefully, finding a cure someday. So I will hopefully look for someone to provide a motion for en banc. Otherwise, cosponsors are welcomed for this important resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, Alderwoman from the eleventh?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the tenth. My word.
You can't forgive me. Today is May tenth. Thank you, Alderman Odenberg, for introducing this resolution, for bringing this to our attention, even more to our attention, as you noted. Many of us are afflicted closely or through our constituencies through this issue. So again, bringing awareness is always a tool that we have down here at the Board of Aldermen that I'm glad that it was put upon your heart to do. And I've been standing up here since you raised your hand the first time to make the motion that we pass resolution thirty-six en banc.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt resolution number thirty-six en banc. Madam, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Vice President Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Valesquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrick. President Green. Alderwoman Boyd. We have fourteen aye votes.
Point of order. Point of order.
Alderwoman from the twelfth, you're recognized. What's your point of order?
I'm sorry, when I voted aye, I didn't have my camera on, so I want to vote aye so I can have it properly registered, please.
So noted. Thank you, Alderwoman.
Thank you.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderman from the second and have adopted resolution number thirty-six. Second reading of resolution, committee reports and adoptions.
Report from the Personnel Committee.
At this time, I would move that the meeting of the full Board of Aldermen be closed to the public underneath the provisions of section six one zero dot zero two one three and section six one zero dot zero two two of the Missouri revised statutes in order to permit the members of the Board to discuss matters related to hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of employees of the Board of Aldermen. It's been, that's my motion, is there a second? It's been seconded by the Alderman from the fourth ward. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Vice President Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Valesquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrick. President Green. Alderwoman Boyd, we have thirteen aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion. Marshals, please clear the gallery and the Board of Aldermen floor. STLTB, please place the full board in closed session. Only members of the Board are allowed to stay, with the exception of Clerk Rogers.
We are back in open session. Alderman from the fourth year recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing courtesy resolution thirty seven, thirty eight, thirty nine, forty, forty one, and forty two.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I move that we suspend the rules to introduce courtesy resolutions thirty seven through forty two.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fourth, seconded by the alderperson from the fourteenth, that we suspend the rules to introduce courtesy resolutions thirty seven, thirty eight, thirty nine, forty, forty one, and forty two. Alderman, you may proceed.
I renew my motion.
Okay, thank you. Suspension of the rules is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderman Odenberg. Vice President Combe.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrick. President Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Boyd. We have twelve aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion of the alderman from the fourth. Madam Clerk, please place the courtesy resolutions at the end of the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Noted.
Courtesy resolutions. Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the courtesy resolution consent calendar.
Okay. We got action. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I move that we adopt the courtesy resolution consent calendar.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the alderman from the fourteenth, that we adopt the courtesy. Discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, alderman from the fourteen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Today is just a day of excellence down at the Board of Alder Person. We got a lot of great, young, amazing people that is soon graduating, entering another chapter of their life. Earlier, we talked about Mr. Muhammad, who is the child of Janice Muhammad, but our clerks, our staff, we already know how amazing they are. But they also aren't just amazing at this Board of Aldermen. They are bringing the next generation with them and doing just an excellent job. So today, I want to not just acknowledge Mr. Muhammad and all his great work that he's doing and wishing him the best of luck on his next journey as he enter college. He's a wonderful athlete. Also want to acknowledge another amazing young man, Mr. Kingston Elijah Ward, who is the son of Aura, who is also the son of Mr. Ward. So he is raised by two amazing individuals. I'm just going to highlight some of his acclamades that he has accomplished now and just looking forward to so many more that he's going to accomplish in his next chapter. Mr. Elijah, this is a smart young man. And I mean, of course, he's smart because look at his mama. She's an amazing individual, but he's a smart young man. He has obtained a three point five GPA. Come on, give that a round of applause. Currently taking classes at Harrisville University. He's become a member of the Honor Society and being a member of College Bound. He's also the captain of a track team and is competing in the Junior Olympic. Mr. Ward has accomplished many and amazing things while at Confluence Academy, which he will be graduating, which his graduation is on May seventeenth. I look forward to being at your graduation and speaking. Thank your mama for that. But also, he will be, he has a scholarship, a athletic scholarship to Philander Smith University in Little Rock, Arkansas. Well, he will be majoring in business and join their track and field team as a sprinter. He's going to bring home many, many wins for your mom because she be down at the Board of Aldermen on her screen watching you. She is very proud of all the work that you're doing. Mr. Ward has a family who is proud of him and a lot of his family is here with him, his sister, his father, Ms. Aura's sister was also here. Proud family, but mostly he continues to walk with his strong faith, trusting and believing that he can and will accomplish anything he set his mind through, through Christ that gives him the strength. So Mr. Ward and Mr. Muhammad, again, the Board of Aldermen, want to just thank you and give you all a resolution from the Board of Aldermen and just say congratulations from one young person, I'm thirty, to another young persons. Y'all doing amazing work. We are so proud. Y'all have amazing parents. As again, We are proud of the work that you guys are doing. We just want to say thank you for not giving up. It is tough being young. People think young people don't go through stuff, but it's tough being young, and y'all are just thriving, and y'all setting a path for other young people to be able to look forward to and see. And I'm going to say especially to see young black men, as a young black man, the only black man currently at this Board of Aldermen, as young black men, just not excelling only in y'all current journey and high school as y'all are about to move forward, but I know y'all going to excel, and y'all have amazing role models. Y'all have amazing mothers, but y'all have amazing strong men also in y'all life. So thank you all for the hard work. Thank y'all for what y'all doing, and just want y'all to know that the Board of Aldermen here is proud of you. We're proud of the work that y'all going to do, and we just want to say thank you. So congratulations, and we look forward to y'all next chapter and the next journey and all y'all accomplishments that y'all going to bring to y'all mama, but also, they going to bring her to the Board of Aldermen. So congratulations.
I'm trying to speak on the next thing, so if anyone else wants to address this, I'll, I'm sorry?
It's.
Okay, yeah, yeah, then I'll hold on.
Alderwoman from the first. Alderwoman from the seventh.
I don't want to, thank you, Vice President and members of the board. I don't want to echo what's been said, but I do want to just give a congratulations as well. I told them in the hall that Ms. Janice is my secretary, and so when he's not stressing hard at home, I stress her out here. And I just want to make sure that I thank Ms. Janice for all of her work and also thank, you know, her son. I don't know you, but I feel like I do get to know you. I've seen you on the screen so many times. Ms. Janice will be typing an email, and then we'll also have you up, and I'm like, who is that running? And she's just so proud of you. She talks about you all the time, and when I first joined the board, me and her had a really good conversation about just like her being a secretary to someone that's twenty-eight like myself and her feeling like so confident in young people's ability to lead and to do great things for our city and abroad because of the model and what she's seen in her own children. So I just want to also thank Ms. Janice because I know, you know, raising especially young black men in our country, but even in our city, it's not an easy feat, but you've done it. You've done an amazing job, and I know there'll be, you know, tests and trials along the way as he goes through higher education, but I hope you really take a moment to appreciate yourself, especially as we come upon Mother's Day for all of the work and things that you've done. And I know there's also other clerks amongst us. I hear about all of you all's children and all of you all's journey and many of you all's children. I don't know if they want to run for office, but I hope that they look into leading the city and leading certain fields in certain ways because you all certainly do a good job of putting up with me and all of my shenanigans and all of my colleagues. So hearing great things about all of your children. I know everyone doesn't have a resolution, but many of you all's children are stirring and doing great things, and you run out of here to get to them every day. So I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge just all of you all, I guess particularly mothers and especially black mothers who are trying to raise children in our country and our city and are doing a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, my fairy godmother, and members of the board. There is another child who, or a young person, I ain't going to say child, another young person who is not here with us today, but again, I want to highlight another staff member, Ms. Chanel, her daughter Savannah Davis is also taking the next journey and has just been doing amazing work and want to acknowledge her as well. Her daughter has, currently goes to Riverview Gardens, and when I talk about our staff has raised some amazing young people and just smart. Her daughter is so incredible. She also has a three-point-oh GPA, so we got to get that a round of applause. She has demonstrated amazing work. She is part of the ROTC program, which I know some of us know a little bit about that. Just she's, that's a great program that a lot of our public schools offer. She's a part of a lot of things at her school. She's on the softball team, the volleyball team. She's a member of her yearbook club where she has demonstrated her time and energy into developing skills to work alongside and achieve many, achieve more than her and her teammates could have ever imagined. Again, I just want to give her a shout out as well. She will also be going off to college as she will be going to Flow Valley to continue her education. Let me make sure I read that right. Has the, no, let me get that right. She has a full confidence of Kenneth David, Chanel David, and all who in her incredible family also at the Board of Aldermen, that she will be doing fantastic in addition to the Flow Valley as she continue to grow into the amazing woman that she. So I had to make sure I acknowledge the parents first before I acknowledge the school because she has amazing mother. She also has amazing father that has just installed so many great values in her. So from at the Board of Aldermen to Ms. Savannah Davis, we also want to give you a huge thank you. Continue all your success to your mom. She loves you, so make sure y'all take care of her on this Mother's Day. And madam or Mr. Vice President, if I could, I would like to make a motion to embank resolution, I believe it's forty-two, and also like to, in forty-two, thirty-four, and thirty-three.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the alderman from the seventh, that we embank resolutions thirty-three, thirty-four, and forty-two. Madam Clerk, or all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alderman from the fourth.
Mr. President, members of the board, there's a few courtesy resolutions that are on your desk, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one. Three of these are to honor members of our Asian-American Pacific Islander community on Wednesday at an event here at City Hall, and then one of them is a young man from my ward who has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, and I would move that we make thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one embank.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fourth, seconded by the alderman from the tenth, that we embank resolutions thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item twenty-three announcements. Madam Clerk, announcements.
Monday, May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, Budget and Public Employees, Kennedy Room, nine-thirty a.m. Transportation and Commerce, Kennedy Room, two p.m. Special Committee on Red Tape, Kennedy Room, at three p.m. Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, Budget and Public Employees, Kennedy Room, nine a.m. Transportation and Commerce, Kennedy Room, two-thirty p.m., May fourteenth. Wednesday, May fifteenth, Budget and Public Employees, Kennedy Room, nine-thirty a.m. Thursday, May sixteenth, Health and Human Development, Webinar, nine a.m. Budget and Public Employees, Kennedy Room, nine-thirty a.m. Personnel Committee, Webinar, eleven a.m., May sixteenth. Friday, May seventeen, twenty-twenty-four, Forboard Meeting in the Chambers at ten a.m.
Other announcements? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to again announce that on Wednesday, May fifteenth, from six to eight, Mike Butler's office will be hosting the Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Celebration here at City Hall in the Rotunda. There'll be food from Samime Afghan, entertainment by the Very Asian Youth Concert. In past years, it's been a good time, good entertainment, good food. I would encourage anyone who's free and wants to come check it out to come down to City Hall for it. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Vice Chair, or Vice President. So as I told you, I have the very best assistant. So in advance of my birthday, she has had Walter Knoll to bring me this lovely plant. So I want to say, Marlene, thank you, thank you, thank you. And like Tina Turner said, you are simply the best. In addition to that, I want to highlight a couple of new businesses in our ward, in the eleventh ward, the elevated eleventh ward. I always have to make sure I remind people that together we rise. So the old Joe Becker's hardware, there may be some of you in the room who may remember this hardware in North St. Louis that had been there for decades. It has a new owner, and now it's called Becker Wilson. This is a hardware store in North St. Louis at twenty-five fifteen grand, which was the original location of the Joe Becker hardware. They are wonderfully stocked with a variety of tools, materials, paint. You don't have to necessarily go to the big box stores. We've got a place that's a little closer to North City now, or closer to maybe even Central City. I want to ask for a moment of silence for my cousin, Charles Michael Stallings, who was a City of St. Louis employee who recently passed. His funeral services are today, I'm sorry, is it today? Tomorrow, and I think the burial at Jefferson Barracks is on Monday.
Everyone, if you could bow your heads for a moment of silence.
Thank you so much. Additionally, Rouge Bistro at thirty-thirty-seven Olive is once again holding a City of St. Louis Happy Hour every Friday. City of St. Louis employees are welcome to join the people over at Rouge Bistro for Happy Hour. In addition to that, I want to remind everybody out there that the eleventh ward has a wonderful, wonderful catalog of wonderful restaurants and venues. Please stop at the Locust Business District. There are a ton of restaurants over there in addition to stores, Grand Center, The Armory, The Foundry, and it's Mother's Day weekend. We're expecting great weather. Some of these locations are a great place to try something new and to take mother to a new place. Happy Mother's Day.
Alderman from the, or Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. I wanted to announce that we will have a Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee meeting this coming Wednesday at three-thirty p.m. We will be hearing from the city staff and consultants who are working on the city's transportation mobility plan, so I encourage everyone to attend that. I also wanted to let everyone know that the Friends of Crandylet Park are hosting a honeysuckle and invasive plant removal in Crandylet Park tomorrow, starting at nine a.m. This has been an ongoing series of removals, and the park's looking great, so come check it out.
Alderwoman from the sixth.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to remind folks that the Special Committee for Red Tape is meeting Monday at three p.m. The focus for that will be minority businesses. We'll have a series of successive listening sessions with topics. So May twentieth, we'll be focusing on food trucks. June third, small businesses. June tenth, special events, and again, this Monday will be a focus on minority businesses. One other announcement, I want to invite folks to a panel that is happening next Wednesday at St. Louis University at Il Monastero. It is hosted by IFCLA, Interfaith Coalition on Latin American Affairs and Boricuas Unidos en la Diaspora, and it is on anti-colonial struggles, Puerto Rico and Palestine fight for freedom. I will be on the panel as well as Dr. Sarah Antwani, who is a Palestinian and Puerto Rican historian and author, as well as Dr. Margaret Power, who is a historian and author from University of Illinois, Chicago. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the board. I want to announce the fourteenth ward town hall this Wednesday coming up, May fifteenth, from five-thirty to seven p.m., where we will have President Green as well as a city assessor there talking about the senior tax freeze, the president talking about things that are going on at the board, as well as plenty of resources from Heat Up St. Louis Utility Assistance and other agencies that will be having opportunities for people to get hired on. That following Saturday, May eighteenth, myself hosted by Community First, with myself, Alderwoman Keys of the eleventh ward and committee woman of the fourteenth, mighty fourteenth ward, Lucinda Frazier, will be hosting another town hall at Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club from ten a.m. till twelve-thirty, where we will have our chief of police, Robert Tracy, as well as the captains in that area to talk about a plan for the summer time as crime is, or as the summertime as crime start to come around. And then on the twenty-first of May, myself and Alderwoman Kara Spencer, that following week, will be hosting a town hall, our joint eighth and fourteenth ward downtown, Best Town, a town hall at the Central Library from five-thirty to seven, where we'll be have Circuit Attorney Gabe Gore will be our special guest. And lastly, just want to wish everybody a happy Mother's Day. I hope everyone enjoy the rose that I brought in. Tracy, somebody tick yours, but I hope everyone really do have a good Mother's Day. Remember, you only get one mother, and to love them and cherish them. And even though mine's isn't here as the first one, I do want to let her know that I love you, and as Tupac has said, it ain't a woman alive that could take my mother's place. So Tanya Latrice Finley, I love you.
Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Vice President Cohen and members of the board. If he wasn't an alderman, my other special guest today would have been the alderman from the fourteenth, but thank you for the rose and for getting every single one of us roses. I think that's really sweet and really thoughtful. Also, it's Mother's Day, so I told, I know my grandma's watching right now, I want to tell her Happy Mother's Day, and I also want to tell my mom Happy Mother's Day, but really, I want to tell all so many of my colleagues, so many of our staff who honestly mother me in different ways and help to nurture me and help to point out things behind the scenes and make suggestions, make sure that I thank all of you for the things that you do for us, for all of us every day. I want to make sure that I remind folks of the town hall that we have on Wednesday focused on vacancy that will begin at five-thirty p.m. and be focused on vacancy. I want to make sure I say again to all of my colleagues, any community spaces, any neighborhood meetings, town halls, whatever the case may be, where you want to talk about the unhoused legislation, I'm bringing it back. It's going to have a zoning companion. I want to make sure I've said it. So if you've got questions, you want to talk, or you want me to talk to your community, I welcome those invitations and would love to work out as much as we can because I do anticipate that going in front of Planning Commission again soon. And on that same note, I wanted to also give a reminder, I've gotten a slew of emails about St. Alexis Hospital from constituents within the Gravois Park neighborhood. I am aware that there seems to be a truck that is coming every night. I am aware the Neighborhood Improvement Specialist has been going every day and making note of, you know, dozens of people in and out. I am reaching, have reached out to the administration to begin, you know, processes, and just want to make sure that I'm publicly uplifting that issue and really urging the city to do whatever we can because this is a parcel that is over ten thousand square feet, and there are squatters within it, and there's daily illegal public safety, public health hazards that are happening, and I am extremely concerned that it's going to go up in flames. And so at least if that does end up happening, I have done my part to uplift to everyone who will listen and try to say, let's coordinate something, let's figure out, you know, what we can do because I'm extremely concerned, not just for that property, but it's near residential area and how if something happens, it could quickly spread to the community. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you again. I simply rise once again. I want to thank Alderman Aldridge for being so thoughtful to provide a live, fresh rose to every woman here today. It is greatly appreciated. I get flowers all the time, having four sons and a wonderful husband, but it is really nice when your colleagues, you know, step outside of themselves to do that little something extra that makes us all feel special. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other announcements?
We have none.
Alderman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Am I on? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we excuse the Alderwoman from the thirteenth and President Green for necessary absence.
It's been, Sarah Second. It's been moved by the alderman from the tenth, seconded by the alderman from the ninth ward, that we excuse the Alderwoman from the thirteenth ward and President Green for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, that we adjourn until Friday, May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.